With Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go ahead and start with asking for approval of this morning's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item we have is approval of the minutes from December 12th, regular meeting and December 10th, joint meeting with the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is approval for claims for payment dated December 19th, 2018. I had one question on one claim that I would ask to remove and just so I can do some due diligence with Mindy McFellin. Under Department 91 Emergency Management, an expense that'll be a reimbursement to Franklin County in the amount of $62.51. So, I'd like to amend the claims to not have that one today.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for December 19th, 2018, with the removal of the reimbursement to Franklin County for the $62.51.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item we have is a public hearing, deeding roads in unincorporated city of Sherman. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And I'm gonna just pass the baton to county engineer Taylor Rawl at this time.
So, the city of Sherman is just off of County Highway D-47, you can see it up there. It's along the railroad tracks. Originally deeded as a town. Once upon a time, who knows when, 1800 sometime. But these roads were vacated back in 1978, nothing was ever done about it. So, we have our three landowners here. And they did some negotiating amongst themselves and we got one spot that was never truly agreed upon. So, we just thought we'd come here today and have a public hearing and then we can start deeding these properties out for these roads we don't need anymore. So, on the left is the current situation. So, we will be keeping this street going through. Keep the guy in my good. Yep. We'll be keeping this L here. So, the easy one is this alleyway up here because Travis here owns both properties around it, so it just, that makes sense. Then, I believe you two had agreed to give this alley to Travis as well between their houses. And then, the majority of Oak was gonna go to Earl Creighton and then the rest of it to Travis. They had kinda agreed upon that. Our only real dispute is along this big long stretch of Depot Avenue. And we kinda went back and forth and there's a fence post down here and I talked to the county attorney. We kinda decided that, you know, if we have to, that's been recognized as the property line, that fence post, it's the tree line. So, that'd be the easiest. I mean, Lynn uses it as his access to his grain bins there, so we, you know, we gotta keep that for him. I understand legally he could create an access from the highway, but you're talking about a half mile long driveway. So, our proposal would then look like it is on the right side there. The red would be Earl's property, the blue would be Thomas' property, and the purple would be ONS Seeds. So, I thought this is your guys' chance. If you agree, if you don't agree, this is your chance to voice your opinion.
Only thing I don't agree upon is right there where you see where he drives. He built that concrete pit, which you can't really tell is there. Supposedly not known as his land, which I don't care about. But if you just divide the land up like they say it normally is, 50/50, you're two foot on the other side of his, on my side of his pit. So, the part you see, the gravel part that he uses, is on his side of the 50%. The only thing that tree lines use for where he's wanting to go further over to is where he keeps all his junk. He don't drive over there, it wouldn't restrict him from going there because the road goes clear up to his land. And I tried to work with him off, take a 20 and him take a 30. And he told me that was alright, but then I talked to Taylor, Taylor said that one don't work. And I told Taylor, he said that'd work, and he said, "No, he just, he said that'll work, but he prefer more."
There's a fence line right here where this blue line is.
Yeah, there is.
So, we always just assumed, there's a fence post.
I have a touchscreen.
Yeah, put touch it.
There's a fence post there and there's a fence line all the way to the highway where that blue line is. And we always just thought that was the...
A property line or boundary.
But as you can see on the left, there's nothing out there that's built within...
And a tree line also, fence line and...
Within the property lines, there's something over on every property line. I didn't assume that fence line was mine. I didn't know where it was, I figured that when the time come, I'd get it surveyed and find out where it was, where my property line was exactly. Haven't been able for it, so I ain't done it. But according to the pins Taylor put out there, 25 foot still leaves him room to get on his road and not stop him from doing what he needs to do. He can put his junk to the north end and it ain't gonna affect him.
What are you joking, are you talking about?
Red ties and all that, that's the only thing you use that fence line for. I used to go through there, but you piled all those bridge ties up and got that.
Off the side of the fence.
I mean, I don't care about it, I don't need in there, but that's the only thing I choose for. But eventually, I wanna be able to get in there. And I can't get to that back property line because I got utility poles going through my side of the ground. And so, they're too close to that fence line by the time I get through there with the truck. I just want access to my property without having to ask permission from him. Otherwise, I'd rather stay county property.
Doesn't this, doesn't this give you access right here? That blue line?
What's that?
Doesn't that give you access right here?
It does, that fence line goes right through there, or that utility poles go right through there. That's what I'm saying. I got all the utility poles on my side, right next to the garage, to where I can't get through there with the bigger truck if I want to get through there. You can obtain access to yours without no problem if it's 50/50 now, can't you? Huh?
Not the pit.
Why not? It puts us on, two foot on my side of that pit according to Taylor's pin.
So, you got two foot on the other side of the pit.
Yeah. And I don't really care about that ground as far as if you drive on it or anything else, just like you said. I could ask you for access, you could ask me and I give it to you, I got no problem with that.
Sorry, that was me, my finger slipped.
Taylor, isn't there something in the code that says, that says to go by what's been historically used though?
I think that's kind of what we had talked about.
There is a code section referring to that, isn't there?
Right.
And if this has been, if that post has been used as the line for what...
If it's been recognized or I guess they could call it acquiesced to something that has marked a property line or boundary, that that will be, the law will recognize that as the boundary.
Yeah, that's...
Can I ask you a question then, upon that? As far as recognizing that post, who recognizes it? I was told when I bought that property, I could drive back through there because it was county ground and be able to get to the north, north end of my property. Who recognizes the post as a property line? I never did.
That, that blue line there to the back of my place, there's 12 and a half foot. Because I got, copy the abstract here.
It'd be almost...
That belongs to Travis when he bought his place, that's not mine. I mean, I got back to there. And there's a wood post out there that shows where that 12 and a half foot is, there's still a wood post there. Because we left it just a purpose for that. And that west of his, between that and where that street is, that's Travis's. Because they used to run cattle up through there to get water. And they kept that when they did it. When Kufus, that was owned by Kufus to start with, the whole works.
So, so Kufus would have...
And then they split this out that I've got for Alan, that's his boy. Him and his wife Jennifer, or Virginia. And we bought that from them, from Alan.
Is that the post that's being used or that we're talking about, or this different one?
Yeah, you're talking about, he's talking about more like in the middle of the picture, by the red property.
Well, it's where that extra blue line is on the back of mine. See that streak?
It's where the red and the blue meet, right?
Yeah.
You're saying between your property, not between his and the road, right?
No, well, I can show you on that.
Just point, don't touch.
It's easier to point this out than it is to do the other.
Oh, who's got the laser printer? Oh, thank God.
Right here, this street here.
Yep.
That's 12 and a half foot. And there's a post right there in that corner, right up here.
There's two posts.
This corner?
There's two posts, one on the corner and one halfway down.
Yeah, right over here.
Okay, there, okay, so it's marking the, between your property and his.
Yeah.
So, that's 12 and a half.
This over here is Travis's and that's mine.
What all is current county-owned property?
Everything that we're talking about plus that road. Yeah, none of this, there's never easement, the county actually owns this.
This part in the red, gosh, the county owns.
Okay, okay.
Yep, plus the part that we're not touching, yes.
And you're saying that sliver of the two blue lines there is what you were just talking about?
Yeah, Travis owns that.
This here is the other end here, tell us where it is over here on that body.
Okay.
And that stuff, I took this on, copied it off, so if they wanted to see it, well, they could.
But, but we're not talking about that part?
No.
Okay.
Do we, we currently plow that?
Yes, just, yes, just the thin and main body. The L, the L, yeah.
Not Depot?
No.
There's trees, trees a lot.
Well, just the whatever on the south end of that, yeah.
12 and a half.
15 foot is also larger than a highway lane. It should be enough. No matter what we do, I don't want to disrupt his farming operations, I mean, that's his livelihood.
I don't want to disrupt his farming oper, either. Right now, Alfreding to do 2030, he didn't want to do that evidently, he told me he did, but he told you differently. 25 foot does not stop his operation. I had no intentions of wanting to slow him down from being able to earn money at all.
No, I think what we just talked about was that post and the fence line and the trees.
But when I bought this property from Caleb, according to him, I already owned all these easements going this way. So, I, no, that's what Caleb told me, I'm not saying that's the way it is.
They said I did, so...
And I went and got the place appraised and they informed me I didn't own these, so I didn't assume any of this other was mine either. I knew I was gonna have to get it surveyed to find out exactly what I owned. So, that post line didn't mean nothing to me other than people saying, "You own here and you own there." It wasn't someone coming out and officially telling me, "You own this." And I ain't trying to be difficult. I just don't want to be cut off from mine either.
Right.
And in regards to that, he could, you know, you could always build a driveway up here, which we don't want to have to force you to do it either, but it's always an option.
It is an option for both of us.
So, we're talking, how many feet is it Travis?
What?
How many feet was it?
For what?
What I had drawn was 35 to you, 15 to him.
Is that what this shows?
Yes, there'd be your red line.
So, I'd be getting 10 feet of what he thinks is his?
Correct.
Well, I don't think it's mine, it would be the, from my understanding, what would normally be offered to me when they vacate streets and alleys, I don't think any of it's mine.
I mean, I don't know if we're in a normal situation here right now because we've got development in what would have been the roadway. And so, maybe if it was grass, no improvement, then 50/50 might seem to be the more normal course. But right now, we have some improvement on the piece that we're disputing.
My question to you about that, I understand what you're saying, but the 20/50 still keeps his thing where on his side. But if I would have beat him to it and built something there myself, would that have been alright? Without no, what he called, you have to get permits and all that?
Well, the permit question aside, if you would have occupied it in some way, then you at least would have had an adverse possession claim.
So, you basically gotta put your stuff on it to take claim of something, even if it ain't yours?
To claim it adversely, yes, squatting.
Can you tell me how 25% would affect his farming act, operation or his pit if it ain't on it?
Not, I, no.
That's the simple question. I'm not, I don't know all this legal stuff.
I mean, one option here, the board can give ownership to land that's been vacated 40 years ago, to the folks that are most directly, you know, adjacent to the property, or they can sell slivers to strangers.
I understand that you can do what you want with it, but I just understood this was to voice your opinion.
Yeah, we're not gonna take action today, I mean, but this is a means for...
Yeah, that's what I understood it to be.
That the interested parties can come together and have dialogue.
I mean, I'm more than willing to work with Glenn. The 2030 is something he said he could work with, if he wants to do that, I'm great with it. I mean, and as far as what I want, I guess, from what I've been told, it really don't matter. But this is my opinion on it.
Yeah, it's not gonna affect basically either one of our operations, but...
It's just a line.
It was just a line that we always assumed was the dividing line, that's why I put my pit there.
Is somebody planning on putting up a fence line there?
There already is a fence line there, ma'am.
Does it have anything to do with that red line that is the division? Then, what difference would it make of a gentleman's agreement if you need to, yeah, you can drive on?
Yeah.
I've already said that you need to get back here.
And I said the same thing.
Then, why the conflict?
Because it comes down to, so if you have a gentleman's agreement, you agree with your neighbor and then all of a sudden you make your neighbor mad, where are you at?
Mick put it in writing.
But I have no problem with that. But what is the problem with 2030, will you answer me that legitimately? Somebody where it affects his operation.
Well, you'd have to ask Glenn on that, what's the problem with 2030 if it affects your opera?
It doesn't, we just always assumed that the fence, we're talking 10 feet, I guess, difference, you know, between the fence and what...
The established line already.
Yeah. No, whatever you're saying.
Yeah, the property line right now runs right up against my garage.
Yep, I saw that.
So, you know.
He would, yeah.
Yeah, that red line would move five foot to the west, essentially.
Well, it's at 15, that red line. So, if he said 30/20, that red line would move five foot to the west.
Oh.
Which I assume would be sitting right in the middle, like, right in that little railroad ties. You know, it would probably be sitting right in the middle of those.
Where's the garage you're talking about?
On this side down here.
Right here.
Oh, alright.
And then that entire fence line's yours to own and operate.
Isn't ours?
Yeah. All I'm worried about is where that fence line is and where the power poles are. It ain't enough room to get big trucks through there. So, if I had five more foot, then eventually if I want to do something back there, I can get a big truck back in there. Right now, as it stands, I cannot.
Unless he came in on the other side.
Excuse me?
Unless he came in on the...
Unless I build a new access, yeah.
Or breaks through my property.
That is the same for that, for both of us.
Or have an easement that goes through Lynn's property to get back there.
Right.
Which we can do that too, and then your gentleman's agreement's now an easement, you can do that and he can't stop you.
But I'm still not understanding what the difference is between you guys wanting to do a gentleman's agreement and moving a five foot when all this property line stuff is all on paper.
But can you get a truck through there without removing all the trees?
No.
You'd have to remove all the trees.
Yeah, I will. But those trees are bad for those power lines because they're growing right by them. They're always coming through cutting them out anyway.
Bob?
Oh, I was gonna say, if the land was like for sale, how would they divide it? Would they divide it the way it was proposed, say, if all that was for sale? If people were gonna buy it, what would they do with this?
I don't know how it would be parceled.
We would probably look at selling the complete street.
Did I say something on that?
Sure.
That there where Lynn is and that over there on the west, well, this side of that line, that actually belongs to the railroad. They, Richard Top had a hundred year lease on that from the railroad. And then Bill Otto got the lease, then Kix has got the lease, I don't know whether you got the lease Lynn or not.
I bought that in North Penn.
Yeah, that's, that's for the railroad, so, and then that, that was on a lease, a hundred year lease.
A hundred years, I haven't seen any of that picture.
Well, it's the railroad, that's actually railroad's. I mean, they could pull that out for money if they wanted to, I don't think they ever will. But that actually belongs to the railroad. A lot of them don't know that because I don't know where the papers are for that, but Richard did now. But Bill Otto's gone too. But Kix should have the lease of that. Because that actually where the elevator sits, that's from there clear to the D-47, that's all railroad's property. We got into that when we bought our place, as made in the paper, where they wanna know how far west we went. We didn't go far enough, you know, to get into that. I mean, they could get dirty about it if they, because they've talked to putting a siding in right down through their place. They're on that east side, a two mile thing there siding because Buckeye is raising, holy heck, about them engines sitting there running. They figured they could bring them down there, why would you let a darn thing run through? That's what it is, a lot of people don't know that, but they'd find out the hard way and that'd be a tough one.
Well, the short streets, I don't, I don't see a problem with any of those.
And you don't have to take action or anything, if you want to instruct me to build a driveway, I'll build a driveway, you know? So, that's why I didn't put any action on it, I thought you guys could direct me and then we'd come back a couple of weeks with the actual paperwork.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts here. And you're fine with 20 foot?
Yeah.
And 15 does not work for you?
No. I mean, like I said, I realize I don't have a choice, whatever you guys decide is decided. But if I have my voice, 15 ain't gonna work, 20 would be fine, just touch me what I need.
And 20 works for you, right Lynn?
30 would be to him.
30 on your side, 20?
Well, yeah, unless a tire gets over it.
No, it don't.
If I drive, if I don't drive over my pit, it does come out empty.
You can't not drive over your pit, if you take your semi to the, my side of that pit, you're gonna come off of it. And that puts you seven feet past your pit.
You're talking about turning the corner, correct?
When I come empty, I don't know, I don't like driving over that pit all the time, and I'm empty and I come off to the side where I'm working on another truck set.
How much of an easement would you need to be able to...
I don't mind, I can do it. How much, if I pull another semi off to the side?
Well, I mean, the difference between what you were asking for versus what might end up being consequences?
Perfect, I mean, that post, the tree line on the...
So, if the line were established a little west of that post, tree line, but you were given an easement that would allow you to get on the east side of that, that would suit your needs?
Yeah.
It was the way I just assumed that that was the one.
I guess what I would look at, I don't even have a problem with the 20/30 as long as easements are granted to both sides and no fence was to be built on it.
Yeah, I got no problem with that.
And then both of you have an easement through there and in the same token, you go 50/50, it doesn't matter to me. As long as you have an easement and no fence could be built.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna believe that.
But if you have an easement, all of a sudden you put a fence in the middle of the street.
I have no intentions of putting a fence in there, and I told her I don't want to build nothing back there along that fence line.
We've just kept on my side. On the west side of the trees, we would've just kept all those, you know, I had shovel, it's coming in and cut all those limbs down, you know, those trees hanging because it hits the trucks and...
And that would be another question about those trees.
Who's gonna maintain it?
Power, he must have, give us some of the trees, I don't care if power people come in and cut them, cut on them all the time.
On the east side, but not on the west side.
Well, some of them, they take out completely. And I told you, I have no problem, if you got some trees in your way, get rid of them.
And could that be established an easement, Darrell? That trees, trees can be handled by either party in this easement and no fence to be built?
I don't want to remove them, but they have a barrier for their house.
Yeah, we can't, you're, Lynn blocked them.
He said he didn't know if you want to remove them, but it's kind of a barrier for your house.
But if, but if you want them trimmed up so, for damages?
Well, I mean, they don't bother me, I'm just saying if he needs to do something with them, if they affect his operation, I got no problem with him doing something with them. The trees do not bother me, I like them there as far as I don't have to look at the grain bins.
But, but this would be part of the easement to where he could do it and say, "You're not, you're no longer the property owner, this easement's gonna go property owner to property owner to property owner."
Yeah.
I mean, this, this'll stay with this property from this point forward.
Yes.
Are you talking trimming the trees or even if you wanted to remove the trees?
Either way, I'm fine with, if he needs to do something with them to, if they're hanging in his place and he needs to get rid of a tree, he needs to get rid of a tree.
And you, you'd be fine with that?
It would be his property.
It'd be his property, yes. But you would have easement on it?
We're talking about that five foot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's talking about that five foot.
I was talking about the easement of the width. Whatever the width we decided to be, I would say the whole streets an easement.
Going on to the next owner?
Yeah.
Yes.
You'd have to write it up that way.
If you were to do the 20/30, yes, it'd be the five foot, I could do that. And you two both agree with that?
I do, I'm fine.
I don't have any issues.
Darrell, do you have good notes so we can draw up a draft and contact the owners and bring it back in a couple of weeks?
20/30 with easements.
Yeah.
Cross easements.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
No, there is an existing fence, right?
I'm not worried about the existing.
But who's gonna, it'll be whoever's land that's on their responsibility to maintain or not.
It's their, I don't care if they maintain it or not.
So, we're gonna have to mention that, but we don't want either side to make any improvements, any new improvements on these easements.
Beyond, yeah, correct.
But there could be existing improvements that are...
But there could be existing improvements that are there that can be maintained.
Yes. If you wanted to replace the fence where it's sitting.
Yeah. Yeah.
That wasn't the issue.
No, I didn't, that's your for me.
And if, if a person, if, I don't know your name, sir, but if, if
Lynn.
Lynn, if you need to main, or trim or remove some trees, that would be your or the cost would be your burden. But if you remove trees, that's your burden.
Yeah. That's pretty much the way it's been anyway. He's been removing trees and trimming them as he needs to. And not once said anything to him.
Or should we just make it so the trees need to be removed?
What would, if you were to put a price on that five feet?
Me?
Anybody. What would that be if I bought his five feet?
Well, he, he gets to set the price, it's his to sell, he sets the price.
You're right, Darrell. You're right.
I could do it the same way and give him the five feet and give you an easement all the way to back on his property.
I'd rather have the twenty feet. I'd feel better about it so I can do what I need to do if I, when I'm ready to do it. I don't see the problem with the twenty, thirty with the easement.
If there's an easement, then that five feet you can't improve.
I can't, I can't hear you, ma'am, I'm sorry.
If you do the easement, that five feet can have no improvements, is that correct, Darrell?
Here's, here's, here's part of it. He's just as worried about that five feet, owning that five feet as I am, I own that five feet for some reason, no matter that easement's there or not.
Well, the fence is what I would like just to make.
The pit is in seven feet inside that twenty foot.
I'd like to make the fence the line. So if I ever want to put cattle out there, I can put cattle out there.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I gotta make a fence five feet from your fence.
Is that your intention, put cattle out there where your grain bins are?
Out north, yeah. Okay.
I guess we got the same problem then with that five feet, no matter how you're looking at it.
Well, Lance said the opposite, where he owns the thirty-five foot and you have the five foot easement, it's the same thing, just and I, I said, you guys can always instruct me to go build a driveway up there too, then you'd have access through the road. I don't know if you're opposed to that, but it's something.
No one yet has answered to me how that five foot's bothering him so much if there's an easement on there. Do you guys want me to change?
It really isn't bothering me, it's just the norm, it was a boundary, you know? It's not bothering me. That fence is the boundary of the tree line.
Because that fence is mainly fence posts.
And if I, you know, if I ever, we have, we raised, like a cast, if we ever put cattle out there, I could make a fence.
But then that says you're gonna put a fence in there, and you just said you wasn't gonna put a fence in there.
He was gonna use the existing fence, is what he said.
So he'll have to clear out all the trees in order to do that to, there is no fence there except for fence.
You're just talking about the north part.
All there is right now is fence posts.
Oh, you're talking the north part, not up by the bin site?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Donna?
Why don't you just split the difference, make it fifteen and a half feet by thirty-two and a half feet?
She meant seventeen and a half, but I get what she's saying.
All right, seventeen and a half and thirty-two.
It's fine, it's just that fence thing is I can live with the twenty.
Is there a fence, an actual fence on that northern part?
Yes.
No, it's mostly posts.
There's barbed wire and fence.
In parts, pit marks and pieces, there's barbed wire, but for the most part, it's mostly posts.
But, you know, it's in line with that tree line.
So it probably was a fence.
At one time, yes, it was. Before barbed wire got cut out, fence posts got bent over by railroad ties and stuff like that, there was a fence there, I suppose.
Are those fence posts viable, where you can string wire on them?
Yeah, you can repound them in, yeah.
You have to run them through the trees, because trees going through some of them.
No, it's, it would just be that north part, from my trees north.
Trees north. How far would the easement have to go to the east to capture the fence line?
Well, that's the thirty-five, it's probably on the.
It'd actually have to be surveyed to just figure that out exactly where that fence line is.
Because that's on the north side, we've mainly been concentrating on that south part. So, I assume it's probably the same, but that's just assuming too.
That north part used to have a full fence in there because Cunningham had cattle out there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably what that, you can see that darkened line there.
That's what that twelve foot on the west side of our place is for, so they could get up to water.
There's a dark line there too, I'm trying to think what that line is. I have an idea should be the water is, right? Good today, because there's kind of like a little ditch, gully there from water.
No, there ain't no water to there.
Here's a tile that runs right through there.
Thanks.
Yes, Bob?
Would this ever be surveyed, like, say you decide to do this and the fence line is the fence line, but what if somebody moved the fence line? I mean, before or afterward, are they gonna come back and survey this? So like, if you have your property surveyed, you know exactly where your spot is? I mean, you're talking about the fence line, but what if somebody knows?
Uh, that's, that costs a lot of money, um, to do that.
Well, for the legal description going forward.
So a lot of times, um, if you want a true meets and mountains survey, you hire a surveyor. Um, but we're do, what we're gonna be doing here is just doing like thirty-five foot of this Depot Avenue and just describing it that way. Um, but if you actually want pins set, you have to actually hire a licensed surveyor.
It's, nobody knows if that fence line's actually on the fifteen foot line, that's just a guess of it.
Well, we found the pin.
On the front end, but not the back end.
We found what this been, right Joe?
So we did retrace a, a survey, um, that was done on the LNS, uh, seed property. So, yes, we did find a cer, a pin on that west corner. And that's, that's what we measured off of.
West corner, south then.
Yeah.
But nothing on the other end.
Negative.
So you don't know how that fence line runs.
And we found one over here too, I think.
Fairly straight, but you don't know.
You found one where?
I think it was that part, right Joe? Or it was at this one? I think it was the north one.
Yeah, we set a flag there.
Might be there where you're shining your thing, because our place was surveyed twice when I moved there. Forty-two years ago, I don't know, I can't tell you the name of the guy, but we surveyed it.
Yeah.
But you found a pin where, on that, on the roadside?
Yeah, I think it was at that part right there. Then you could pull the sixty foot down there.
Yeah, then we set, we, uh.
Because I tried to find pins and I never found pins.
We, uh, we based it off of the.
You measured it from like up here.
And then we, uh, did a COGO, which is just a, uh, function in a computer to, uh, retrace, and we actually set one.
So was it not the tile then?
No.
Okay.
Your survey was awful ways, it's off ten foot.
But he found the pins in the ground too, though.
Well, that's where my abstract is. I got five foot on the north side of that garage, and you got to, that's right through five foot of the garage.
So this is where a licensed surveyor would come in to play.
It was a licensed, it was a licensed surveyor, because they surveyed twice, once when I moved there and once when I built the garage.
And that, and that's the thing about, a survey is not every surveyor is gonna come up with the right, the same answer.
Well, that's where they put it on the abstract. That's where they put it on the abstract. Here's a picture of the abstract right there.
To, uh.
And that'll tell you where all that should be. Because it's got it right in what book, what volume and stuff you got right up here with all this stuff in it.
Correct.
So if you guys want.
There could be another one arguing the exact opposite though.
Well, if you guys, if you guys want what's in your book up there, I can tell you what volume and that stuff it is if you want to look at it. I mean.
I think it'd be easier to do after.
I, I can agree with them on the two surveyors, I got one surveyor telling me I own my driveway and the other one telling me I don't.
Yeah.
So. I mean, I, I understand what they're saying, but we're not arguing about that portion of the road, so.
Well, you are arguing that established fence line is fifteen foot mark, but you ain't gonna know until you get it surveyed. It's all gonna be on paper, because it costs too much to survey it, so if one of us wanna know, then we have to have it surveyed. Am I correct?
What they're establishing is how Joe mentioned that, the width of the road, and you're dividing it this way and that way.
Well, I'm just saying.
If the established, if, if the decision is the established fence line be the line, then you can have it surveyed, and whatever it comes out to be is what that established fence line is. But are we gonna hire a licensed surveyor to do this, to give you property?
In writing, they're wanting to put it down as fifteen foot, not as the fence line, as fifteen foot. And what I'm saying is, no one's surveyed to see where the fence line is.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying. So we're all doing hypotheticals, but it's just, it's all gonna be on paper until somebody pays you a survey, and so it all breaks, that boils down to that twenty, thirty, fifteen, thirty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-five.
For the easement.
Yeah, with the easement, you know, whatever.
Or we just don't do anything and leave it as a county road.
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering, Taylor, if we if we came across where the, the north side of this drive or whatever that is. Yeah, if you go north of there, is that something that we could, that they can agree on a split? And then we just keep, we just keep the rest of it and give ameesements?
They disagreed on that too with the current fence line.
So there's disagreement up above?
I don't understand what you're saying.
See, see this line?
Yeah.
If we draw that line across, left everything south of that public and just talked about the north part.
Well, see, uh, this comes back to all, on the south end of the property, he has a problem with and I have a problem with.
I know, so if we just left the south end of it.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
County owned, and then cut that off at that line and got rid of or deed it, you know, the, the rest of it to the north.
I got no problem with that.
Then my pit's on your property.
Yeah, the pit's still be on the county.
My pit is on county, on the county street.
Right.
So then he'd be under your easement.
Oh, I mean, it's there now.
Yeah.
I mean, I have no problem with it being on your street, but down the road, I don't know if that's a problem.
I mean, that allows us both the access to what we want, and I got no problem with that.
I'm just, you know, down the road, I don't wanna kick the can, I do.
Correct, yes, yeah. I'd rather just settle it all, but we're gonna have the same argument about Montel at some point, so.
One option would be to deed it all, to all three of them, and let them sort it out, and it's off the, it's off our plate.
Oh, you mean equal portion?
No, just all tenants in common over all of it, and then they can sort out the details, and at least we cleaned up a forty year.
We've gotten it off of our books anyway.
Yeah. So we're giving it to all three landowners.
Or you just have to give it to the two?
Two.
Well, whoever, it's just.
I don't. Just the two.
I don't care if they both own it, I mean it.
What's the, uh, what's the, this is the age of, to be on a county?
There isn't.
The south.
It wouldn't affect, I mean, you could leave it all county, it's not really gonna change anything, but I know Earl wants to build onto this part.
Right. But then we're not talking about that separate.
Correct, but that, that's pretty much the reason this is all being brought about. And, you know, like I said, it was vacated forty years ago, they should have taken care of this forty years ago. But here we are.
Build to the north rural?
Yeah, just there in front of the garage, between the road, that's gonna stay there in the garage.
Oh, good.
I just wanna put a, like a car garage there, put the car to pick up, yeah.
I see.
That's all I want.
And I don't care if you wanna make sure we give that property to Lynn so you could have the pit, and then you leave that twenty foot public too.
Where's the pit?
The pit is about right here.
That little black spot, okay, that's what I wondered.
Lynn, how much, uh, when you drive around that pit, isn't that too steep to go over the side there?
You can see my gravel right here.
Yeah.
Right there.
In the darkest spot of that gravel is where you drive.
The gra, that's the pit right there, and if I've got a truck on the pit and another one coming around.
You can get inside there.
You can't get another semi around that.
We have Travis.
Well, I guess you pull the other one off, just like we would have to do.
That gravel right now, the elbow of that gravel, that would be on his property, right there.
At the twenty foot.
Yeah, and according to that right there, if you look at that picture, it's right on the thirty-five, fifteen line.
I'm still thinking, draw that line across, get rid of the north, deed it to both of them on the bottom half, and they can figure out and sell each other whatever they want off of their footwise. Be my.
It takes us, that takes it off our plate, but it's gonna create a legal battle for them.
That's their deal then.
Let's just solve it here.
I don't know.
Well, leave it, leave it twenty, thirty, and if he has no trouble with me driving on that gravel that's on his.
I don't have a problem with that, I said I.
Well, if there's, and if we, we do the easement then.
I've got no problem with the easement, at all.
Easy right up that way?
Leave it twenty, thirty, and then if I, my tire hits his.
I've never said nothing about you driving there, ever. No, just when guys swing, it was more about Kix's, they swing clear up in there and then they make ruts and throw the three inch rock up in the yard when the maintainer comes through that you guys put down and then chip seventy-five dollar blades. But I've never said a word to you about you driving there.
Let's leave it at twenty, thirty.
Okay.
Get it done.
Agree?
I agree.
With it, and then just something that says you have permission to drive.
With the easement.
Okay.
Did you do that part? You do the easement part.
Well, they're getting it figured out here.
Let the attorney do that part, but yeah.
Is that gonna be the full, the full length of that, or did you wanna end it at that tree line so we can clean up that back part?
I don't understand what.
You're still talking about for the, he's talking about for the easement part, do we want the easement to be for the whole stretch or just for the south part?
That's up to you, Lynn, if you want the easement for the whole stretch, it's fine with me.
Well, I mean, I've got.
The reason I ask if there's an existing fence and he wants to turn cattle out there, and you can't,
Well, I can make the fence, I guess.
But you can't build a fence according to the easement.
No.
You could on the thirty, twenty foot.
No, according to what he's gonna drop from the easement.
It's kind of a nomad's land where there will be no new improvement, then that would prohibit you from putting up a fence, so cutting the,
So that's up to you on that end, Lynn.
Cutting that Depot Avenue in half, or wherever you cut it, and so the easement would only apply to the south half of it.
So it'd be half of this that I would own, or?
You'd own the thirty, you'd own thirty foot, but you would have to build a fence on that thirty foot.
Right. Basically, if you didn't do the easement on the north end of that property, he wouldn't have to build, worry if he wants to build a new fence or whatever.
Or, or he could.
It'd just have to be on the thirty foot line, yeah.
If it's just for the south half of that property, it don't block you at all for a defense.
Or he could stretch the fence on the existing posts and use it as an easement to turn his cattle on.
Well.
Well.
Well, if he wants to.
I know, that's why I asked.
The, on the before, with the two little yellow
Yep.
lines, the blue line that connects the two, you see where I'm at? Yes.
This?
The, the, and now the corner up there where the, where it turns blue or green, whatever the color.
This part?
No, it's north, yeah.
Okay.
Is that point right there already a fixed point that we can identify?
I would call it, yes, because you could call it, you could say from there to Oak Street. Now, that'd be the northern boundary of Oak Street.
So at that point, the easement applies to the south, but not to the north.
Correct.
That way you wouldn't be prohibited from
The trees.
Putting a fence up and all that, prehandled.
Then you should be a taxidermist.
Yeah.
You should.
That's not fun at all, too.
That'd be all right.
That works for me.
All right. It'd have to be on that 30-foot line, but he'd have to build the whole fence, but I guess he'd already be building it on the other four sides, too.
Well, yeah, the old fence is shot, too, but I'd have to redo that, too.
Okay.
So, we got it figured out?
Sounds pretty mutual, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll start it, try bringing it back away like January. And then I'll, you guys want me to say anything, or just let you know if it's different, or, I mean, it shouldn't change at all.
If it's different, then let's.
And if not, we'll just do it, I'll just let you know when it's done.
All right.
And will there be, like, surveying?
Yeah, that's the thing, you, I mean, we don't really wanna pay to set the survey points, but we could have Joe go out and do it. You know, that part would be pretty easy, 'cause you'd just be measuring off of that.
What I could do is go out and put some lathe, I won't, I won't send any, like,
Pound of post or something.
Yeah, that's up to you guys, put something in front of it, but I'm not gonna put any rebar out there, well, I can put, like, these lathe thing, hey, this is the.
This is Travis.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause a survey would cost us over 10 grand.
That would be helpful.
Yeah. Since I'm not licensed, it's not really leading me over, but it'll give you an idea, so.
Do you two want the same thing on the Oak Street? Just pound something where it's gonna be?
That's up to you, Earl.
Should be too, or?
I don't think these two have a problem with that, I don't know that I'd worry about it on a post. I gotta mow around another post, and I don't really wanna mow around another post for it.
So, put the posts out there, huh?
But, 'cause I don't think there's any, I mean, that side, those two roads were always, they, they already decided that long, long time ago, it all, what was okay for that, so.
Sounds good, I think you can close the hearing and move on from there.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Next item I have is the review and consideration of final plans for Hardin County Bridge Removal and Grading Project FM-CO42-96-55-42 in Section 30 of Eldora Township. Taylor?
So, this is for the Old Railroad Rails to Trails thing, south of town there, you know, our little, it's paved at the moment. So, Joe drew up these plans, and we're gonna cut the pavement off at the hog scene and plants, and everything to the west could just be gravel, like, on the airport. We'd be building a new driveway for the airport, because we're gonna bring the whole road grade down. This will no longer be a bridge, it will be a half-grade crossing, just like 99% of all railroad crossings. So, you know, it doesn't seem like too complicated a project, just moving a lot of dirt, puts a cop down.
And the airport wanted the dirt, is that where you're moving dirt, too?
If we have any, actually, 'cause we have to bring the trail up, too.
Okay.
It's gonna just be swampy.
Yeah, the numbers are close right now, where we don't know if there's gonna be any dirt left. But if it is, yes, the airport, as requested.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item we have is review and consider final plans for Hardin County RCB culvert replacement, Project FM-CO42-97-55-42, Section 31 of Clay Township.
So, this is the same old railroad, gonna be a trail. Only deal with this one was, there's so many intersections so close, we couldn't make it an accurate crossing, so we're gonna have to fork over some more money and put a culvert in place of the bridge. What was it, a 12-by-12, 12-by-12? So, you know, that's wide enough for the bike path to use on your side. It'll have, it won't be a pre-cast box, they'll pour it there, to make sure we get the water going the way we want inside of it. So, that's where that's at, 'cause he wants to get the trail going down to that point.
Is it still gonna be at the same height, I mean, the grade?
The road, no, the trail, yes. The road will also come down 13-foot, I think.
Yeah.
But the trail will be above that?
The trail will be where it's at right now.
Oh, all right.
That won't, that won't move at all.
The bikes will go through the box, go through.
Oh, all right.
Are there any restrictions, emergency equipment?
Their requirement was, was 10-foot by 10-foot floor, something like that. And I, I talked to some ambulance people, we all kinda thought, that trail's not wide enough, you'd never, ever be able to turn around, so we were gonna build a driveway on each side of the box, that way you can get on with your ambulance there, you can get off with your ambulance there, 'cause you're never gonna turn around. It'll be a one-way path, so I, we don't really envision people driving through it, but we're giving them ability. You'd have to fold your mirrors up, and you'd have to shoot that thing pretty straight for how far is it, Joe? For 60-foot, so I'd rather just build a driveway and let it go out if we need to.
It also gives them the exit point.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the plans for the culvert replacement project in Section 31 of Clay Township.
Second. I have a motion, a second discussion. Joe, I understand you were helping orchestrate this, so thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have is review and consideration of final plans for Hardin County Pavement Markings, Project FM-CO42-99-55-42. Taylor?
Yep, so this one wasn't Joe, this was Bruce, but, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, all the red ones you see there, we'll be painting the white, everything that's white on the road. White lines on the roads, not yellows.
Shoulder lines?
Yep, and railroad crossings, stop bars, yeah. So, yeah, it's pretty simple, just kinda keep it on our program. Last year, we painted all the yellows in the county. Now, we'll do half the whites.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plans for the Hardin County Pavement Markings on, on Project FM-CO42-99-55-42.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stick with you here, Taylor, any utility permits, or are there secondary roads?
No, no utility permits, they've been out, cut and brushed right now, so, doing what they can, it's been pretty nice this week, so the motor grader guys have actually been out and worked on their roads, so. We'll take what we get as long as we can get it.
All right, next item I have is, I've got two changes status from the Conservation Department. First I have is Luke Wagner. He, excuse me, has resigned his full-time position as Hawkins Interpretive Ranger, effective December 19th, 2018.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Luke Wagner.
January 2nd is his last day.
Okay. We'll amend that to January 2nd being his last day. I'll second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have is the resignation of Nick Baumgartner, Natural Resource Manager. His effective last day will be January 1st, 2019.
January 2nd.
That's the right day. January 2nd.
January 2nd?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Nick Baumgartner.
I will second. I have a motion to second, any discussion?
I just wanna thank them, they're both advancing their careers, and they've done a great job for me, and wish them all the best. Hate to see them go, but talented people, I just hang on to. Luke's done a great job at Hawkins, and Nick, this year he was here, he brought in over $200,000 of grant money, so. They, they both did a great job, so I just wanna thank them and wish them well.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item we have is a subordination agreement, this agreement is. You skipped one. Oh. Oh, sorry.
Oh.
The time and date for the January organizational meeting, I apologize. What time do you guys wanna start it? 9 o'clock? Sure. By code of Iowa, it's gotta be the 2nd. Yep. So, you wanna make a motion, Lance?
I'll make a motion to have the time and date, January 2nd, 2019, at 9 o'clock in the conference room.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next item is a subordination agreement, prepared by Region 6 Planning Commission. What this is doing is allowing us to become the second party on a mortgage held, that is being paid by Dustin Conick in the Ackley area, so after talking to Region 6, they explained there's refinancing going on.
I'll make a motion to approve the subordination agreement as stated, or as presented.
All right, we'll second. Okay, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next we have three changes status for the Hardin County Sheriff's Office, the first is Deb Mesh. She's being promoted to Correctional Officer Specialist, Specialist at the pay rate of $20.76 an hour.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Deb Mesh.
I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion? Starting 1-1 of 2019. Yes, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is promotion for Ryan Boozman, who is being promoted to Correctional Officer Lieutenant at the pay rate of $24.55 an hour, effective January 1st, 2019. I'll move to approve
I'll second.
with the effective date of, oh, you said that, I'm sorry. That's okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, oh, Julie.
Um, do they, does he have special certification and stuff, I'm just, just, just wondering?
I think it's length of service he's been over there, and it's a promotion because Eldora hired as a police officer, his, the gentleman, Mary Dunn, can you?
Michael Pierce.
Michael Pierce was hired.
But does this?
Yeah.
Does this guy, has gone, has he gone through any certification?
He's a sergeant currently, he's been a sergeant for many years, so.
You're saying he was?
Like, through the police academy stuff, I'm just.
Correctional officers, sirs, don't go through the police academy, generally speaking.
Oh, so.
But the sergeants have had some special training, I mean, he's already been in a management position, so this is just a promotion to another management position.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there's like certification that would go along with that, that they have any? I, I don't, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
And then, you know.
Yeah, the sheriff would probably have to answer that question, or Nick, Nick Whitmore, the jail administrator.
All in favor of the change of status for Ryan Boozman, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The final change of status I have is for Drew Storm, he's being hired full-time Correctional Officer Sergeant, effective December 19th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Drew Storm.
I will second. Okay, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, so does he, would he have any special training as well? I'm just, don't, I'm, you know, I just am curious about this, does he have to go through? Any special training for this, do they have regular, up-to-date training there?
I'm sure they do have some sort, but again, that would be a question for probably Nick Whitmore at the jail. I'm sure they don't just hire right off the street for, for those positions.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the podium for public comment. Julie.
Oh, darn, she's gone. There was a branding meeting?
Yes.
Yesterday, could you perhaps go over that, and?
Sure.
Does Hardin County have a brand now, what would that brand be?
Well, we met, and to make a long story short, we came to the conclusion that we would rather meet as a group of individuals from the communities to work on branding ourselves individually, knowing, 'cause we know, and yesterday it was apparent, there's a lot of history in Hardin County where we wanna emphasize and focus on the history and, and promote things, so instead of going to an outside consulting firm upwards of $25,000, the branding committee decided to go ahead and forego that and, and continue to work on their own.
So, the branding, so will the Board of Supervisors be attending those meetings? As individuals, or, or, you know? So, will.
Normally, I've sat on those, normally I've attended those, yesterday it was on our agenda, and all three of us attended, because we were talking, or our committee was talking about hiring a firm, we had, we got two proposals for doing the branding for the county and the various cities, and one of the proposals was for $110,000, and there was another proposal for $26,500. So, we, so all three board members attended, and due to the turnout from the other towns, there was a majority of them that didn't even show up, so to me, that means they don't wanna pay for any of the funding to do this, so we just kinda got chatting back and forth, throwing out ideas, and it was just decided to, I mean, being as the county already has kind of a recent brand that's on all of our secondary roads, trucks, Conservation has, has theirs on their trucks, so we've kinda done that within the last few years for the county departments. But as far as changing that now, and Iowa Falls also has theirs, and I don't think they're interested in changing, we're just gonna do some throwing out of ideas and some of the things that we wanna bring bring to the forefront as far as why you should come to Hardin County, you know, tourism-type things, so so hopefully, we get some response to that, and that's not gonna cost anybody anything, other than some time.
Hey, yeah, 'cause, you know, I walk the lake frequently, and, so, yeah, tourism, you better do something about the water, you better do something about the stink in the air, and now they're, you know, I've read more about using manure as, what, side dressing, corn, you're gonna have more smell, and a couple of weeks ago, I was up at Torrey Alden Williams on a tour with a congressman from California, I'll tell you, I was surprised and sickened by that area that is just a wasteland, what have I seen? Warhouses, they're vacant, it is just capo after capo. And it was, I was shocked by it myself, so, yeah, you better think about making changes in this county and not just trying to stamp a brand on something. You've got to change the county to make it more appealing to people, and not just pause, and all that comes with that, so, please think about what needs to be changed in this county before you stick a brand on it that doesn't fit, thank you.
Anything else? Other business, Lance? Nope.
Nope.
Megan, do you wanna talk about you and the DNR at all, about Pine Lake Road?
Oh, yeah. So.
So because we're cutting all the hard surface roads first, theirs we're gonna do last. We, we need that road to be shut down for part of the day or like, we don't wanna have it shut down for weeks. It's because we have to put our chipper on one side and chip it up, because we can't chip it into the water.
Right.
And then when we cut the trees, most of them are leaning over the road, so they're gonna fall into the road. So just to prevent like us getting hit by a car or injured or like a tree falling on a car, we just, we're gonna shut down like a section of it and then at the end of the day it would open up. So we, we work seven to three, by the time we get loaded, sharpened and all that stuff, maybe like seven-thirty to two-thirty, shut the road and then open it, just so none of us get hit.
So it'd be from like the highway out here?
Yeah, I'd detour.
North to.
We'd put orange fence up probably what, after the dam?
Yeah.
And then probably like before the, you know, there's those houses just south of golf course.
Right.
That's where you put orange fence up, but I would, I would try to detour traffic.
So you guys will work in conjunction and get a public information message out?
I, so, you know, this is just kinda coming about, so we didn't have the post put in the ground and now the ground's too hard to put our post in, so. It'll be on A-frames, which could get knocked over, so, and I'm trying to think of as few signs as possible to get this done. And, I mean, I don't wanna just put up a road close sign and say, good luck, find your own way around either, but we could always.
Meaning detour through Steamboat Rock or?
Yeah, I was gonna go west down to D forty-one, yeah.
Yep. How long should this take to get it done?
One day?
We're, well, so we're, with like four to five of us, we're hoping it's just gonna be one day.
Okay.
It just depends on how thick it is and how much, like, if it's really muddy, it's gonna take a lot longer, cause we actually have to like stabilize ourselves on the slopes, so we don't fall and roll.
And if we want it open at night, that cuts down on the hours, they could work two, which.
Cause we can do long.
If it's closed, it could be closed some night too, I.
Just a question, um, I know Secondary Roads is working on some of the brush. Is this anything that they could help with to get it done quicker?
She's already got the DNR talking to help him too.
Oh.
Well, it's just, any place is gonna help, cause the, I don't think he has seasonals right now, so it'll be, there'll be four to five of us out there.
Okay.
So we're hoping it's not gonna take, and then it's not giant stuff, so it's not like gonna take a long time to buck up and then send through the chipper. It's just stuff we can cut at the base and then someone throws it through.
Okay. Yeah, just please give plenty of notice and.
It's gonna, well, we, we talked about mid-January, but then like the, I didn't know, no one responded to my email about our chainsaws and chippers that I sent out today, so.
I haven't even had a chance to look at my email.
We have one chainsaw working and we don't, the chipper is down till we get the knives back from Vermeer. So we're still cutting and we're just gonna lay it and then we'll go back and chip it.
Okay.
But we just have the one saw, so.
Okay.
We got two guys out in the tractor and then the other two are cutting, or cutting, so.
Okay.
One chainsaw?
Yeah, we have three, but two of them are being repaired, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Instead of trying to throw it up there and closing the road, could they, uh, throw it in a truck and haul it back?
Well, she's worried that when the trees come down, it'll be on the whole road, so it's more about public safety.
There's, there's one shoulder there.
Yeah.
No.
We have to cut at the bottom. We also, I mean, we also risk getting hit. Like we, we were on, I think it was D forty-one, we almost got hit like three times. And we have the flashers and the trucks are spread out, so, or the one truck, so.
Okay.
We all know what it is. It's pretty much a tunnel you're directing.
It is.
There, so. I don't wanna close the road, but public safety.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
All right.
Nothing else?
Nope.
Nothing else? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.